Okay. Second meeting of the night is a meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, March 5th, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
Here.
Brown. Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Next up is approval of the minutes from the previous meetings. We have one from February 19th and a special meeting on February 19th. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sign, sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to public input.
Did all of the mayor... The second item on the minutes would be special meeting minutes? Do you want to do that or not?
We did them both.
Both at the same time, right?
Yep. Unless you had a correction?
No.
Okay. We have a card from Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. They do not wish to address the council, but it's their position that they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Alan Max Axelrod wishes to address the council about the graduate employees' organization You have up to five minutes to speak.
So first off, let me say that I have never loved a city more than I love the city of Urbana. Every single time that I thought I was setting expectations for what it was going to be like to live in the city, it's been exceeded. I start looking into solar panels, I find out that we've done an aggregate program to have renewable energy for the entire city. I talk about trying to put solar panels on the fire station, and that's facilitated, and we've actually had productive business in that regard. And when, on November 13th, it was still a question as to whether or not tuition waivers would be taxable for graduate students, the city council unanimously said, to use Eric Jacobson's words, "This is one of the stupidest ideas that the administration had proposed." And every single member of this council agreed that they would write the representative in opposition. That measure would have added about $6,000 in cost to graduate employees, like the 2,500 represented by the Graduate Employees Organization, where they cannot afford that $6,000 extra cost. What we're fighting now, at the University of Illinois, is the preservation of tuition waivers, not for ourselves, that's actually secured. The university is trying to say, "Don't worry about what happens next. Take your tuition waiver and leave." But it threatens the viability, the economic viability of graduate education for every student in the graduate program except the very, very rich. I'm from a 10-percenter family. That is to say, we're in the upper 10% of the tax bracket over in Florida, and we would not be able to afford the $17,000 per semester tuition that my waiver is currently valued at. We are fighting for the protection of that tuition waiver, and I am beyond happy for the support of the representatives who added their name to a letter, and especially to Aaron Ammons, my city representative, who actually came to a rally, walked the pickets, and said that he's been used as the hype man for SEIU, and I don't know if I can use the word that he said, but he said hype wasn't necessary. So, I'm here to basically say to the community of Urbana, which has been amazingly supportive to each other, has been amazingly supportive to the graduate students, to join us on the picket lines, to join us at our rallies, to join us in drafting a resolution for next week in support of the graduate organization, the Graduate Employee Organization, as we fight for the continuation of graduate education, not for us, but for the next generations to come, including the kids, the students in this town. The students in this town who are learning really productive things, like restorative justice in public education, which is something that my high school never even touched, and we were considered a top 100 public school program. It was Fort Myers Senior High School. We had an international backglow rate program. This community is truly special, and I hope that we will stand together to fight to keep it that way and to build an even better community together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Eldress Melinda Carr. She wishes not to address the members of the council, but expresses continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. I have a card from Kale Beckew, who wishes to discuss employee relations at Urbana.
Mayor, if you would mind, the three of the folks that were going to speak on that issue, could we all just come up together?
Sure. So it's Michael Wilmore, Kale Beckew, and Jason Scott.
So, my name is Michael Wilmore. I'm proud to be the staff representative for AFSCME Local 1331.
Michael, we'll bring up another chair.
Oh, that's okay. I was, I was going to let these two guys do most of the talk.
If your back is like mine, you need the chair.
They work harder than me. They need to sit down. So I'm Michael Wilmore, the staff representative for AFSCME Local 1331. I'm proud to be the representative. These are folks that work very hard for the citizens of Urbana, for the city, and we're here just to talk a little bit about our view of labor relations. I'm going to go ahead and hand out information for the city council to all of you. We hope that you'll consider the information carefully and think about the future of employee relations here at the city. We'd like for you to make informed choices about that. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jason Scott, who's the president of AFSCME Local 1331, and he'll be followed by Kale Beckew, who is also on the executive board of the local. Thank you.
Hi. As Michael said, my name is Jason Scott, president of AFSCME 1331. We are Public Works Parking and Police Support Service employees that keep the city streets drivable, run the landscape recycling center, keep the trees and flowers growing, ensure appropriate parking and animal control. There are key services we provide to the citizens of Urbana every day. We work hard and we are proud of the work we do. In return, we ask to be treated with dignity and respect. Instead, we find that concerns that we raise about fairness, consistency, and efficiency are ignored. Instead, we are told that our group must, excuse me, accept concessions that others are not asked to accept. Instead, when we ask to be given modest improvements that we have been granted other groups, that have been granted other groups of employees, we are told it can't be done for us. So, from all of us here, our message is plain. We just want to get back to doing the best we can for the citizens of Urbana every day. We are not looking to pick fights that seem entirely unnecessary. We ask you to consider our message carefully and give us the respect we deserve. Thank you.
My name is Kale Beckew. I am an arbor technician at the city of Urbana. My reason for speaking tonight was to give you a character reference of the Public Works employees that are here tonight. And I wrote a long speech that I'm not going to read because I don't think it quite describes how loyal we all are and our dedication towards the city of Urbana with everybody here tonight. So, if you would just look around and you see all of my coworkers here tonight who are concerned about this and their support, that you would be aware of how important this is to us. We, we are a group of people who work very close and we, we just would like to work, we would just all like to work together, get this all resolved. I, I can't, I can't really say everything that I, I wish I could say about my coworkers, how great they are. There's been so many times that they've been there to help me with, you know, anything related to my work, but the, just, I'm watching these minutes count out. Jason?
You're good, man. You're all right, man.
Yeah.
You get double five.
The, I can't say enough about my coworkers here tonight, and that's my reason for speaking is for you to know that we're just an amazing group of people. We want to, we want what's best for the city, and we are willing to work with you out whatever it takes. So, come on, Matty, help me out.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time, but please, as you sit here, look at everybody that is in the crowd here, and know that we are here to work with the council as a group, and our goal is to make this community a safe and enjoyable environment for all the citizens of Urbana, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I can assure you, we, we share the same goals, and there's not a day that goes by that I don't hear from citizens expressing appreciation for all that you do, especially, I have a soft spot in my heart for people who climb trees with chainsaws, as you know. So, but, but really, we, we very much appreciate what you do and, and what you bring to the city of Urbana, and we truly do want to resolve this, so we will be working as hard as we possibly can. Thank you for coming tonight. There's no unfinished business, so we'll move on to reports of standing committees from, a report from committee member, or council member Dennis Roberts.
Right. So thank you. I'm going to be reporting on our previous meeting of the committee of the whole dated February 26th of last month. We have brought forward to the city council several different resolutions and ordinances, and I'll go through them now. First, we have Resolution Number 2018-02-00R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement for 2018, concerning the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, which comes from the Urbana Business Association, fiscal year 2018 to 19, and for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Is this a roll call, or will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
Yes.
Brown. Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
That motion passes. Dennis?
Yes. Next is Resolution 2018-02-009R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement for 2018. This concerns the Champagne, Urbana Folk and Roots Festival. And so, this is for the year 2018-19 fiscal year, and for the committee, I move approval.
Second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Sammons.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes. That motion passes.
Next, we have a Resolution 2018-02-010R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement for 2018, the Pygmalion Festival. Ben Fein, Fein Brisoni Incorporated for the year 2018-19, and for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second. I'll give it to Aaron.
I'm going to go with Aaron on that one. Any further discussion?
Must be popular.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes. That motion passes.
All right. Next, we have Resolution 2018-02-011R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Economic Development Agreement Champagne County Economic Development Corporation for the year 2017-18 and fiscal year 2018-19. It's a two-year contract. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Sammons.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes. That motion passes.
Next comes ordinance 2018-02-015, an ordinance authorizing the dedication of Riteaway. This concerns 601 North Lincoln Avenue, and for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes. That motion passes.
Okay. And I think the last item here is ordinance number 2018-02-016, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year, for fiscal year 2017-18. This is a budget amendment, amendment number six, which is an omnibus budget amendment dealing with several items, and for the committee, I remove approval.
Second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes. That motion passes.
And I should mention that one item was held over for a continued discussion for the next committee of the whole meeting, and that had to do with a zoning change.
Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Lori Pearson, Planning Manager, will be presenting with a very large stack.
Yes.
So we'll have presentation by staff, and then I have two comments from members of the public, and then we'll take discussion.
All right. So, there are two ordinances that are for the same properties, so we'll, I'll present on those together. So what we have here is the, here's Lincoln Avenue, here's University Avenue, and this is the recently decommissioned and demolished Illinois American Water Site, and a number of properties to the north. This is Hill Street here. So the properties under consideration tonight are in this area that I'm outlining. And what is being requested are two things. One, a change to the comprehensive plan, the future, specifically the future land use map. Right now, those areas have a couple of different designations, and just as a reminder, the comprehensive plan sort of sets the guide for zoning, so it provides some guidance as to what the zoning should be at a particular property. So in 2005, it was always envisioned that this would remain an institutional use, because it has a land use designation of institutional, because nobody envisioned that the Illinois American Water Site would no longer be needed there. The other areas of the site have designations of community business, and the community business designation is approximately in this area. And also, with the comprehensive plan, not only does it set the guide for zoning, but it also is more of a conceptual plan, so whereas it might look like it cuts a lot in the middle, it was, it's just broad, think of it as broad brushstrokes. So the other then request is to change the zoning of those properties to match not only the proposed comprehensive plan designation, but also the proposed use. There is a developer, and there are representatives from the development team here tonight that would like to redevelop this 10-acre site for townhomes. So first, I'm going to get into the specifics on the comprehensive plan change proposed. So as I mentioned, it has a current designation of institutional. You can imagine that there's not a lot of demand for institutional uses at this site, as none stepped up to purchase the property. So then the question one asks, one needs to ask is, well, what should this use be? Because we normally would go to the comprehensive plan, and since that doesn't really apply anymore in certain instances, what should it be? So, what we do is we look at the surrounding area and kind of figure out what else do we have in that area. So this site is right in the middle of some commercial uses and some residential uses. Often, what we'd want to put in between those uses to protect the residential from the commercial is sort of a medium-density residential use. It's a great buffer between those two uses. So that's actually what's being proposed in both the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the actual development, is a medium-density residential use. So it makes a lot of sense to change that institutional comprehensive plan designation to something that would allow that residential use. Now, in terms of the community business designation, one might look at some of the past rezoning cases which occurred in this area, both successful rezonings to commercial and unsuccessful rezonings to commercial, to find that there was some hesitance to have commercial uses here. There couldn't be zoning, well, let me take a step back. As I said, many different zoning attempts were made to change this into commercial. Only some of them were successful and at a lower level than what was, what was desired, so perhaps commercial isn't quite the right answer here. So that's another way to support the change in the comprehensive plan. So what is being proposed for that comprehensive plan designation is called a mixed residential land use with an urban pattern. So the idea with this land use is that it provides that transition between the higher intensity commercial uses and the lower intensity residential uses, and it even allows for some low-scale commercial uses should the zoning match up for that. And now, in terms of the urban pattern, the idea is that you're going to have the parking in the rear, and you're going to have the front doors facing the street, and that, that design is also consistent with the proposed development. So that is why that mixed residential urban pattern comprehensive plan, land use designation was one that was selected as the proposal for this site. So getting into the zoning, because as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan sort of guides what the zoning should be for the area, what we do when we look for what the right zoning should be for a site is also the surrounding uses and the surrounding zoning. So what we have here, and the site is hatched in this hatch, what we have on the ground on most of the site is currently an industrial zoning. So that's IN1, and it allows a variety of uses such as warehouse, wholesale, some pretty intense use, boat sales, that kind of thing. So the, the zoning that's on the ground right now could be considered not that compatible with the residential zoning that's immediately to the north. So tomorrow, someone could come in, if these, if these folks didn't redevelop the site, could come in and build a giant warehouse development that is permitted by Rite. So perhaps IN1 is not the right zoning for this particular site so close to campus and to downtown and to the residential areas. So, these other areas here currently zoned a lower intensity or lower density residential, that's at yellow, and then a mix of business, this is B2, I believe, commercial zoning, and a little leftover piece of the residential zoning here. So what is proposed is to take this whole area and to zone it R4, which is a medium-density residential. It allows things like small apartment buildings, townhomes, as well as single-family homes, and should one get a special use permit, a professional office would also be allowed. So, that is the proposal for zoning, is really to provide that buffer between the lower intensity residential to the north and the higher intensity commercial zoning that's to the south along University Avenue, and it would be an actual downzoning from that industrial zoning that's on the ground in, in most of that location. So when the Plan Commission considered all this, they also considered, of course, the LaSalle criteria, and they found that with all of these facts, they've determined that the proposed zoning does meet the LaSalle criteria, and their meeting was February 22nd, and they voted to recommend approval of both the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the zoning map amendment, or the rezoning. And staff would make that same recommendation today for these cases, and as I mentioned, the applicant is here, and the mayor mentioned, the applicant is here. They have a brief presentation, unless you have questions for me.
Any technical questions? Eric?
Oh, it's actually a process question. Did, was there input from the residents immediately to the north of the, the property that's, the big part of the property?
We did hold a neighborhood meeting on, in December, I think it was December, was it December? Now I'm getting all my neighborhood meetings mixed up. It's in the memo, but we did have a neighborhood meeting.
7th.
And whereas it was an open house, so that it was not as though I could hear all of the questions and the comments that came out, the perception that I had was that there was not a lot of concern, other than, you know, your typical things about construction timing and that kind of thing, but not a lot of concern over the proposed development as it was presented. At Plan Commission, there was an individual, and he's here today, so I'm not sure if he's planning to speak, that did express concern over the, just a portion of the site because of the properties that he owns at that location and how that would interact with his properties. But it's my understanding, he did not have an issue with the development as a whole, just questions and concerns over that small part across the street from his properties.
Mary Alice?
So, I can't remember if there was one or two people who voted against it on the Plan Commission. I know there was only five people there that night.
At the Plan Commission meeting on the 22nd.
Yes.
There was one vote against on both.
So let's say if, if it's rezoned to R4 from industrial, is it possible, if at some point somebody wants to put a convenience store or something there, how would they do that with the whole parcel being rezoned into R4?
Well, a convenience store would not be allowed under the proposed R4 zoning. So, and I guess I'll take a step back, because we, as staff, kind of thought about this a lit, a little bit on, could, should we do some sort of split zoning to allow the potential for commercial, which would still allow the proposed development? But then things get really complicated for a what-if scenario that isn't being proposed. So might it complicate it beyond what it was necessary to complicate it in order to provide it for the, for the future? So, we as staff didn't suggest, I don't think we as staff suggested that to the applicant as a, as a split zoning to allow some commercial, but, I mean, to do a convenience store, you would have to pick a pretty intensive commercial zoning in order to allow that as a matter of Rite. So it would not fit under the proposed R4 zoning.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if the, even the people who are proposing to build this, if they wanted to put in some kind of small little store there, they, they would not be able to do that, and the only way that you would be able to do that is to split the parcel. Is that correct in the future?
Well, you would at least...
To go through the whole process? I'm just curious.
You would at least need to rezone a portion of it.
Right.
Rezoning a portion of a lot is possible, but not ideal. You would typically prefer to split out a lot and then rezone just that lot. It just makes things cleaner from an administration standpoint. But, no, they couldn't tomorrow come in with a, with a convenience store if they were to be granted that R4 zoning. Could not.
Okay. Thank you. Eric?
But, now the property immediately to the north, which has some commercial, which actually is zoned currently in a way that, or is some small business, some neighborhood business, that, under the current zoning... business, that, under the current zoning, that could, let's, let's imagine a scenario, this proposed development creates a lot of traffic and activity in the area, and that little region immediately to the north now becomes a more viable proposition for a neighborhood business, such as a convenience store. But, we're actually being asked to foreclose that by converting that also to R4. Is, and so, how does that work?
I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking of the Family Video Site, were you not? Were you-
No, no, I'm speaking of the area immedi-, oh, you can't see where I'm pointing, obviously, but the area, immediately to the north of the area that was the waterworks.
Okay, so you are, you are speaking of this area.
Yeah, and now that is not proposed, that's not part of the proposed development.
It is part of the proposed-
Oh, it is part of the proposed development.
Yes.
Okay, 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 okay.
But to answer your questions, often retailers look for rooftops, and more rooftops equals better sales, so.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I apologize for not having read the proposal more carefully and more detail.
Okay, I think we'll have the presentation. Did you have a question?
No, Aaron did.
Yeah, Aaron?
So, I was not in town, I was at my son's graduation on the 7th, so I was not able to attend. The proposed development, there is a concern about what impact that has on the commercial property to the north of there, because we know Family Video has closed down. Do you know who purchased that? Is it the same developer who's here tonight?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, I'll wait to hear more from the presentation before I go any further. I just wanted to clarify that.
So Jim Rouse from Land Pro? Jason. Oh, welcome.
My address is 315 Coney Street in Athens, Georgia. Appreciate you having me here tonight. Just have a very brief presentation, I will move through it quickly. Again, my name's Jason Dornboss, I'm with Landmark Properties, I'm a developer at Landmark. We're a national multifamily development company. We focus on municipalities that have major universities, and we develop apartments in close proximity to those schools. We specialize in a product that we created in 2003 that's called, the brand is The Retreat, but we call it, it's called cottage-style housing. And effectively, what it is, is if you took an apartment complex and blew it apart, and all the units were townhomes and single-family home-style buildings, and they have the features of an apartment complex, such as onsite property management, amenities, maintenance, and so forth, but in a format that looks and feels more like a townhome and a single-family style development. These are just some of the amenities that we typically include and that we would include here. So here's some elevations of cottages.
Jason, could you speak into the microphone a little bit more?
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So these are some of the elevations of the cottages. These are craftsmen-style, they're all, the exteriors are all masonry and hardy planks, they're manufactured to really have a long lifetime with very minimal maintenance. The, yeah, and then we mix up the elevations, so we have different color trim, we change the trim, and really break up different units so that when you're driving through the community, it feels like you're driving through a, you know, in-town neighborhood versus an apartment com-, community. And again, here's kind of just some pictures of our projects that we've developed, whereas you can see, we do a ton of landscaping, that's one of the things we'll do, a lot more landscaping than even code requires, just because, you know, we have a lot of open space in our communities, and, you know, want to have some large-growth trees and vegetation that will mature nicely. Here's, you know, here's what the, the current zoning is. You can see, you know, the IN-1, and staff did a great job outlining this, but, you know, we, our proposal, as I mentioned, is just, it's an adaptive reuse of a industrial site. It's surrounded by residential, and we feel that it's a great transition going from a, to the south, this B3 business zoning, to an R4 lower-density kind of apartment-style community to R2 to the north. So it really transitions nicely between those different zoning classifications. And just to give you an idea of what the different zoning districts allow, you can see that in IN-1, there's no maximum height, the FAR allowed is, is 2, whereas in the R4, you've got a 35-foot maximum height. And then for any project that is over 2,000 square feet, there's a maximum FAR of .7, which, you know, we'll, we'll likely be under that as well. Here's a, just an aerial of the site, and we kind of covered that. And then here's just a conceptual site plan that we've come up with to show you how a community like this, cottage-style community would lay out on this site. You can see, we planned for the bike path to the right-of-way, right there, going from Lincoln over to church, you know, in the event that the city continues that in the future, which it sounds like there's plans to do so. And then, you know, we've got the more, the higher-density townhomes to the south that front the railroad track, and then we've stepped down the height as you move closer to the single-family neighborhood to the north. So that's kind of a brief overview of what we're proposing, and I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you have.
Can you back the slide up?
This one?
Thanks.
Sure.
Aaron?
So, thank you, Jason, for the quick overview. So, the affordable housing, what, how do you see affordable housing playing into this?
We rent them, you know, we'll rent it based on the market rental rates. There's not an affordable housing provision, but we have multiple price points within the project. Our four-bedroom, we have some four-bedroom units, those will be the lowest price point, the rental rates. But really, it's based on the market conditions for, for apartments in this community.
So, I'm sure you've done some sort of analysis of what's happening in the area. Lots of apartments are going up all over the place, and it's trending towards making sure that the students have access to apartments, and it's causing a tremendous problem for affordable housing in the community overall. So this is my ward, and I am pretty adamant about making sure that we have some level of reasonable housing or affordable housing for-
Sure.
-people who live in this area. So when you talk about market rates, what, I don't know if you've gotten into all these details.
Yeah, I mean, my view on that is that, and it's kind of self-serving admittedly, but supply is what really, I mean, if you look at communities like Berkeley, California, right now, they're pushing forward any project that will come through, because they've fought development for so long, they have a housing shortage, and, you know, their housing is not affordable right now. So I think that by, you know, in a smart way, adding additional supply that makes sense, I think you're, I mean, maybe that project is not solving affordability, but I think that by moving forward good projects that you got, that the council believes in, I think you are, in, in a way, addressing affordability by adding additional housing units to the community.
So, let me make sure that I'm clear then, and those who are either in the audience or listening understand exactly what you're saying about-
Sure.
-this particular project. When you say market rate, are you going to rent these houses at the rate that individuals are renting the houses in the area? Or are you talking about comparing it to what students are paying for apartments and things like that?
It'll, it will probably be more in line with the multifamily apartment complexes that are newer in the community.
Okay. The concern that, I know this is just an initial drawing or sketch of what you would propose.
Sure.
The concerns about the access to Lincoln Avenue, or Lincoln Avenue being a main thoroughway, and I see sidewalks or something leading up to that, how do you, how do you plan for any particular safety concerns and stuff around that?
As, you're saying, pedestrian traffic?
Yeah, and none of these are driveways, these are all sidewalks, right?
Correct, yeah, those are, the only entrances at the traffic light vehicular there, and then there's a-
Church Street.
On Church Street, right.
Secondary on Church Street, correct. I mean, they'll, I mean, just like any other pedestrian, I mean, we, we love to have pedestrian activity. You know, and that's, that's one of the things that we love about this location, is just because you're so close to, you know, the university's right there, the hospital's right there, there's some great commercial in the area. I mean, we, we feel like that's a positive to have commercial, pedestrian traffic, you know, coming and going versus people having to drive to, you know, wherever. So that's one of the things that we, you know, really like about this location.
And so, as far as, I mean, this isn't the busiest train track that we have in the area.
Right.
But what sort of barriers do you propose would be there to, you know, for sound barriers or safety concerns for the people who, who would choose to live in that, that section of the-
Yeah, we'll absolutely do some, something to, for exactly what you're talking about that would buffer sound and kind of create a, a barrier so that, you know, no one, you know, accidentally wanders out onto the track or something. There'll be, there will be something that will kind of create a barrier between the two.
So, this is always a tricky part of this, part of this process for me-
Sure.
-because I don't want to try to pin you down to what color the fence would be and all, what type it would be-
Right.
Or any of those particular things.
Yep.
But I also can't accept something would be there, right?
Okay, yeah.
I need something more than that to have a better understanding of what's being proposed.
Yeah, I mean, we can do, we've, we've done some really cool, like, like a, it's a LEED-certified, kind of a, it looks like stone almost, I forgot the name, it's a technical term, but it's kind of like a, it's a little wall that we can do, you can do it in like eight feet. But I would imagine we would do something there, and we could commit to doing that. If you, if you all want us to do that tonight, we could certainly do it.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious about it aesthetically, as well as-
Sensational is what it's called.
You know, safety for, if you're saying these are going to be multi-resident homes or townhomes and stuff like that, we foresee children being in, in the space-
Absolutely.
...as well, so I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, I mean, we, we share, I mean, everything that you're saying is, you know, we feel the same way, and we, you know, want to, to make sure that it's a safe environment for the residents that live here.
And just overall, what you're saying, and what the developer, what, what your team is saying, is that this is designed, from your perspective, is to create housing for residents, not particularly for students?
Anyone can rent here. I mean, it is, due to the proximity to the university, we expect there will be a lot of students that choose to live here. But, yeah, anyone can live here. We have, you know, professors that live at our projects, we have, I would imagine there'll be a lot of young professionals that work at the hospital that would choose to live here as well, just due to the proximity. So it's kind of designed for that, those types of residents.
Well, those are not the type of residents in particular I was speaking to.
Oh, right.
But certainly, we would want, you know, students, professors, or whoever, but in particular, there's going to be certain individuals who are going to be, I don't know if, moved out of the homes that would be torn down to the north. Where are these people going? Are they going to have some sort of access to this? Is there a way to, for lack of a better term, grandfather someone in? But to have some sort of program that allows the individuals who have been dispersed from that area to have access to, to first dibs, if you will, just trying to make use some terminology here that we can-
Right.
-make sure we're on the same page, that the individuals who are going to be removed, would they have any particular preference to getting into the new complex?
And I'll, I'll have to look into that. I mean, we, the property owner is the one that they leased those, their, my understanding is that those are all rental properties currently on the, the portions to the north, they're all renters in those. And I'll have to actually talk to the property owner and just see, because they're, they're handling the relocation of those residents. But, I mean, when we're, when we're in the situation where we do buy a property prior to the residence relocating, we absolutely make sure that, you know, they're relocated, because, I mean, frankly, we just don't want to have a PR issue if there's, you know, an issue with one of those residents that's unhappy from being relocated. So we have, in other municipalities and communities, we've worked with them to find them housing that's, that meets their criteria, whether it's, you know, they need to be pedestrian to their job or near a bus stop, which would probably be the case here, because there's a bus stop right here. And at a certain price point, we work with those residents to make sure that they're finding a solution that meets that exact criteria.
And do you foresee this being a gated sort of community? I'm thinking about the Hill Street Court and the broader community in that area. Is this going to be something that this area is fenced off and people can, can't access it from the other sides?
We're, we're still kind of going back and forth on it. I mean, in most places, people ask us to gate it, but, you know, we're, we're still evaluating that right now. We haven't made an ultimate decision. I don't know if you have a opinion on if you want to gate it or not. I mean, we've got, as you can see, that to the north, we'll front the houses to the street, so it's not like we're kind of walling in a property by any means. We, you know, we want it to look and feel like it's a part of the neighborhood.
Right.
I mean, sometimes we will gate just for, you know, security reasons, just to make sure that, you know, there's people aren't just coming and going, that residents are not. So, you know, we're still evaluating that right now.
So I have several concerns that I would like to, to talk about further, but I don't know if this is the, necessarily the appropriate time to do that. From a development standpoint, I'm sure Brandon and some other folks have talked to you about the, your workforce and who you would be bringing in, or who would be a part of the workforce development to do this project, and about participation goals for minority-owned businesses.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure he's talked to you about that, right?
Well, at this stage, we're looking at zoning and changing to, changing the comp plan, so that will be further on in the process.
And just to remind everyone, no conditions can be placed on a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that this isn't like a special use permit or a planned unit development where conditions are appropriate.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
All right, I'll try and hit the easy ones first. A, do you, are you under contract for all these properties right now that we're talking about rezoning?
Yes, we are.
So everything, including the ones on Hill Street?
Everything that's shown right here, yes, is under contract.
All right. B, is your plan, I know you've been talking about a right-of-way for a multi-use path, are you guys going to build that?
Yes, well, the, the portion that you can see, kind of, you know, running from Lincoln over to the property that we don't own, we would be building that portion that would be open for, you know, whenever the bike path was ultimately-
So the city would need to continue it from the east to the west?
That's my understanding of how it would work.
To Church Street?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that that's, all right, so I got two easy questions out of the way.
All right.
Third easy question, so the housing, you're talking about where the housing faces, and I've been thinking about this railroad track issue here.
Yes.
So it looks to me like everything on Hill Street faces Hill Street, is that correct?
Correct.
And then everything on, on University faces University. Sorry, Lincoln, Lincoln, my bad.
Uh, yes, that is correct.
So what about the stuff that faces the railroad tracks?
It does not face the railroad track, they face internal to the property, so-
So those face the actual parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, so are those-
And that's kind of what, if you can look, similar to the pictures you see here.
And if I remember correctly, I think the four-bedroom units are the ones that are by the railroad tracks, is that correct?
Those are the townhomes.
The townhomes, okay.
Correct.
Um, so I, I do think, I am concerned, I just checked with Lori to ask if the trains actually run there, because I honestly have not seen a train there. But she informs me maybe four times a week.
Two, two trains go east and two trains go west each week.
So four, each week. So, given that there is at least one train, I think it is important that, that there is a strong barrier there to prevent anybody from crossing those tracks. People like to make shortcuts all the time.
Yep.
So I, I really think that there needs to be a strong barrier there for safety reasons.
Yeah, I agree.
And I realize that we can't put any- And I realize that we can't put any special conditions, I just want to voice my concerns to you on that.
We're in agreement on that.
Okay, um, and then, so I actually think, I'm, I, I was thinking about this today, cause we've been talking a lot about connectivity to downtown, to campus and so forth, and I think it's really nice to bridge this between the, the College of Medicine to Carl, is right smack dab in the middle here, um, which is really nice for professionals who are working in that college, um, but also for people who are attending that college, so that's, I think that, that would be a place that you might want to.
Absolutely.
And so, I, I was talking to some friends, I'm like, are, are medical students actually going to want to live in a four-bedroom apartment? My friends say yes, I, I don't know if they're correct, but anyway. Um, so I think that it's a good location for that type of housing. I do hear what, um, Aaron is talking about in terms of affordable housing, and so to that point, my question is, right now, the policy of the, um, new buildings in Champaign and some of them in Urbana are to rent by bedroom. So, there's individual leases right now in a four-bedroom apartment. My question to you is, is that the plan?
Yeah, we typically would do that.
So, it's by bedroom, it is not by actual, um,
Unit.
Unit.
Right.
Okay, and I think the going rate is between seven and eight hundred dollars a bedroom, right now in our community for student housing. And I say that, it doesn't prevent people who are non-students from living in it, I just say predominantly students are living in those types of housing. So, I, I just, I just thought I'd put that out there.
That probably includes like cable and internet and some other things as well, so.
It does.
Probably sounds a little.
Yes. It includes all the utilities, including internet, yes, that is correct. At least the ones that I'm aware of, I don't know about all of them. All right, so those are my quick list of questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jerry.
Lori, uh, I was just curious about, um, how we see this affecting, uh, home prices and rental rates in the surrounding area.
Uh, I am not an appraiser, so typically though, more supply equals, you know, some reduction in prices, but again, that's not my strong suit, but that's just the laws of supply and demand.
Uh, his, historically when we've, I mean, I don't know that I can think of a particular project like this in Urbana, especially, and definitely not one since I've been on the council. Um, have we had something similar to this that we've done before with this intention, uh, for student housing?
I think what makes this project different from some of the more, um, recent apartment, and I'll use the term complexes, is that the scale of this development is, it's townhouses, it's not giant apartment buildings. So, I think that's one of the reasons why, um, staff was supportive of this development is because it's a form that we're not seeing and that this community doesn't have a lot of and perhaps needs.
Okay, um, I just, I'm just curious is, uh, it's how it would per, how it would really, you know, end up affecting rental rates for those folks in the surrounding, in the surrounding area, but, um, last question is also for you on this one is, so we do zoning, but there's going to be a whole separate process to approve the development itself, right?
Uh, so, with an R4 zoning, the uses that they propose are allowed by right, which means what they need to do is, is meet all of the requirements for building code and zoning codes, uh, through the building permit process, it, it's not a, it's not a public hearing process.
Come back to us.
No, no, they don't, um, they're not requesting any waivers or any relief from our, from our rules. Therefore, it's an administrative approval process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we, we do have one member of the public who wished to speak, and then
Thank you.
Can open this up for discussion? Michael First, eight oh two North Broadway.
Can, can we get a, a map of the area on here, maybe the one that was in the memorandum?
You have five minutes?
Oh, great. Um, I'd like to speak in opposition to the zoning.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to speak in opposition to the zoning as currently proposed. Um, Lori mentioned, um, the concept and, of there being a buffer between, um, in industrial and residential. I don't think that buffer concept is at all applicable here, because the development is set off by railroad tracks and there will be an adequate, um, buffer barrier to prevent people from, um, you know, violating the railroad tracks. So, the, the concept of, of a buffer zone doesn't seem to be very, um, applicable. I attended the February second Plan Commission meeting and, but I really wasn't prepared and had thought out everything. Um, but I think what really should happen for all this area, rather than be zoned R4, it should be zoned R2 or maybe R3. Um, especially this, now I should not, you see this big, almost triangular area? This is one big lot, okay, and which is currently, um, which has a, um, Lincoln Avenue address. And, um, especially disappointing would be the rezoning of this gigantic lot that goes from Lincoln Avenue all the way almost to Goodwin, um, as, as an R4. The proposed development isolates and compromises the long-term integrity of one of Urbana's most pleasant neighborhoods and runs contrary to the goals and the objectives, objectives of the, of Urbana's comprehensive plan. And some of those were listed on page seven of the materials that you were given. Um, and, and, and the area I'm concerned about is from, on the west, Goodwin. On the south, Church, all the way from Goodwin to, uh, Crystal Lake Park. Uh, on the east, Crystal Lake Park and the Fairgrounds, and on the north, um, I guess it's King Park on one side of Lincoln and Sunset on the, um, west, on the east side of Lincoln. This whole area is the only pleasant racially integrated neighborhood of good quality older homes in Urbana. It is, it's actually sort of a secret that few people know of. The housing stock actually is, is probably in some places somewhat better than the East Urbana historical neighborhood. In the past fifteen years or so, this neighborhood has, has seen all sorts of, of improvements. Habitat for Humanity has built three homes, at least two homes on the eight hundred block and one hun- thousand blocks of hill, and two on the, have been renovated, and two energy-efficient homes have been created on, on, uh, on Fairview, I think on the, probably eleven hundred block. Any residential development in this rezoning request needs to be integrated into the existing neighborhood. Unfortunately, the developer's plans to isolate the development from the rest of the neighborhood by first, building as unyet, and as yet unspecified barrier along, along and, along, um, the eleven hundred block of Church Street and only having one access to the development from Church Street, which would be, uh, a service, a service, a service vehicle entrance. This, this is totally unacceptable and will also prevent children living in this new development from walking directly to the nearby King Elementary School. Approving this zoning change squanders a rare opportunity to expand our high-quality, close-to-the-university neighborhood and perp, and, and, and the, and the opportunity to perpetuate the neighborhood's character. Now, page seven of the, uh, memorandum that Mr. Schneider, I guess, prepared for you, uh, lists some of the goals of the comprehensive, of the comprehensive plan, and I don't think this project satisfies them. Goal one, preserve and enhance the character of Urbana's established residential neighborhoods. This does not do that.
You have thirty seconds, first.
The new development in the established neighborhood will be compatible with the overall urban design and fabric of that neighborhood. This, it'd be just an add-on, it'd be different, it does not at all integrate. And the new development should be consistent with Urbana's unique character. I'm not really, I'm not really sure what, um, uh, what, what that means. My suggestion is that the best solution today is for the council to zone the whole area R2 or O, or R3. However.
I'll make a motion that we add one more minute to this conversation.
All second.
However, we can argue that the slightly higher residential density is acceptable for structures along Lincoln Avenue. So, I would suggest that instead, we do the following. This big, huge lot needs to get zoned R2 or R3. Okay? The, uh, the, uh, the houses along Lincoln Avenue, cause we're not going to build single-family houses or duplexes on Lincoln Avenue, those should be, should be zoned R4. And, but, in addition to zoning the big area, that big triangular area, R2 and R3, we should, we should have, uh, we have a variance so that structures that are right along Lincoln Avenue can be R4. So, I want to maintain the integrity of this big area as part of this beautiful neighborhood. And until we make those changes, I'm totally opposed to the current proposals. So, R2, yeah, I guess I have nothing else to say, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a?
Aaron.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, you said that you were opposed to the development as it currently states, uh, stands, and I wanted you to be able to take your time to share what you think it should look like. So, you started to touch on that, that R4 on the, on Lincoln Avenue. Um, and I'm not sure we can break it up, do, can we do that? Uh, if we wanted to do R4 on the Lincoln Avenue Court or, and that section and change the rest of it to R2 or R3?
Well, what I, what I'm actually suggesting is that it gets zoned R2, R2 or R3, and then the developer apply for a variance, which we hopefully will grant, so that, 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 the houses along Lincoln Avenue are zoned R4, that can be done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a point of order question.
Yes.
To the extent that we're not supposed to vote on that?
Yes. Sorry about that.
I would have voted against that, I would not afford that opportunity, so I just.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Discussion.
Oh, okay, cause I would have voted for it, just for the record.
Okay, can we discuss the topic at hand? Any further questions for Lori or staff? Dennis?
Right. Yeah, this is like a little bit difficult, because, um, if the city council doesn't have any opportunity to review, um, you know, the, I'll, the final plat development, uh, which we don't even have if it is, if it's becomes, what do you call them, a PDU, a PUD?
PUD.
PUD, and what's, what, what action would the city council have if this was a regular PUD? And is this really actually a regular PUD because it is a multi-home development?
So, PUD, the idea behind a planned unit development is to allow a different kind of development in exchange for some relief that they're seeking from, uh, zoning regulations. So, it is, um, it is a process that one undertakes in order to get something that's not allowed as a matter of right. So, the mechanism that is proposed here is a changing of the, of the land, the underlying zoning, so that it would allow the use as they are proposing without, without requiring any deviations from our rules.
And so, basically, we would be waiving the, uh, opportunity to, um, work with the developer on a PUD plan by rezoning it to a, uh, a level which would make it, um, acceptable by right. Has the planning division talked about the value of, um, bringing it to the city council as a PUD? Which would then, what, result perhaps in a request for rezoning? Would that rezoning request come secondary after the proposal was made as a PUD?
So, uh, I would need to double check, but I'm fairly certain that the zoning that's on the ground, at least portions of the zoning that's on the ground would not allow a planned unit development for residential, particularly the industrial site. So, the sites would have to be rezoned first to something that would allow a residential planned unit development to even occur. And then at that point, a planned unit development could be considered, but, uh, there's a lot of steps there that have just been introduced. And as staff, we need to respond to the application that is submitted to us, that's our, uh, it's their legal right to have it reviewed. So, we were responding to the application that was in front of us.
And I would like to say then that, um, uh, this, uh, so many aspects of this proposal that very much appeal to me. Um, certainly, um, this is rather a unique and wonderful, um, construction style, and as far as like, um, construction design and facade work, the detailing of, um, you know, the front of the homes exceeds what we see generally in, um, vinyl clad, partial brick box construction for housing in, uh, multi-family, uh, construction these days. So, this has such great appeal to me. I think that, um, the concern that partly the, Dr. First and Councilman Hammond's brought up is how it integrates into the community as a whole, might be addressed if we felt that the, um, that developer, uh, was, um, integrating the fronts, uh, the, maybe the, the roads, the access roads into his development so that, um, even along Church Street, even though it might be partly vacated or partly undeveloped as a street, um, would face the community and, um, there would be no barriers between the community and access, which would allow then people to walk from the interior of this development to the schools in question, King, the King Elementary School and such. And, um, there are, so, there are parts of it that I think are extremely valuable and I appreciate very much. But, um, you know, yes, I could see that if this was, if we, i- if we zoned this R3, would that then require a PUD to be filed if he wished to have higher density in some parts of it?
Yes, it would.
So, I wonder if that would be something this group wanted to consider. We're not saying that we're not interested in this, in the ultimate project, but if we have, if we waive all control over some features that I think would truly enrich the project in a community preservation basis, we might want to have you go through a PUD request, and I don't think it's an honorous request, considering some people say, okay, I saw the hand going, oh, maybe so, maybe not, so, okay, I mean, that's my point of view at this point, I'm just wondering what other council members say.
Mary Alice?
So, sorry about that. So, right now, I think the higher density stuff is by the railroad, is that correct?
Yes, that's, um, there's, it's, there's more density currently proposed along the railroad tracks than there are farther north, correct?
And then the lower density is on, is it Hill?
Hill Street, correct.
So, would that be, under technical terms, considered R3?
No, um, so, R3 only allows up to duplexes.
Okay.
And what is proposed, because it's technically on one or two lots, depending on how it's divided, it's technically considered multi-family because you have multiple units on one giant lot. So, the lowest, the lowest zoning district we allow multi-family as a matter of right is the R4 district.
Okay, so, so bear with me for just a second, I, cause I'm, I'm trying to figure out if, what we're doing, we're, we're collapsing this whole parcel, right? Into, the proposal is to collapse it into R4. If the stuff on Hill Street, and I'm not suggesting that we do this, I'm just trying to think theoretically here, if the stuff on Hill Street stayed as single parcels, one, two, three, four, five, there's five parcels there, right? If they were zoned R3 and that, these builders build exactly those properties like that, would that be allowed by right? I'm trying to figure out if it basically is R3.
Well, if it's five lots, then without looking at the, if those lots meet our minimum criteria for duplexes, but, uh, you could do ten units.
Okay, so, and.
And I don't know what their proposal is along that stretch. There's also increased setbacks and increased open space and decreased floor area, so some of those other things, I don't know the answer to.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get it, I get it, so do you, would you be able to tell me?
Sure.
Thank you. Did you understand my question?
Yeah, and I think what's, I was saying that we'd have to do individual lots with duplexes on them if we had the R3 versus what we're proposing, um, so some of these buildings up there, there's, uh, our actual four, there's four units, they're designed to look like a big house, but there's four units in it.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, so, just, just a couple of my comments, um, you know, we have to do something with this. You know, we have to do something with this area. It's empty right now. We are disrupting a few houses out of 400, roughly, 450 bedrooms that we're proposing to add. It's four houses that we're proposing that would be moved, that are under contract right now. I think actually that it does add to the uniqueness of Urbana. I don't know of any other property around here that looks like this, that could appeal to different areas. I am cognizant of the fact that it needs to be consistent with the neighborhood. And for that reason, I think that certainly a gated community is not fitting in with the neighborhood. So, I don't, having a gated community here, I think, would be very detrimental to the community, but it sounds like their mind has not been made up. I also realize that we have no ability to say yea or nay in terms of that, but that would be one area that could be addressed, in my opinion.
Eric? Eric?
Oh, Eric, okay. Yeah, I am cognizant of, you know, the, I get the urge for lower zoning, more space, but I think that the more, the denser development, the R4 development, and especially in the style that's being suggested, I think would be an asset to the city. And I shouldn't presume, since it's not in my ward, to presume that it would be an asset to the neighborhood, but I will say that we have a comparable, not, the style is very different because it was built a long time ago, but we have Landmark Manor, for example, in my ward, and I think that is an asset. So, I would suggest that this looks to me like the same kind of asset, in fact, maybe better, because it looks as though it's going to be more attractive than Landmark Manor. So, I, unless I hear something new, I anticipate that I will support the proposal.
Does anyone wish to speak who hasn't spoken on this yet? Dean?
This is obviously not my territory, so I don't have a dog in this race, really, so to speak, but...
Well, we all have a dog in this race because it will have an impact on the city as a whole.
Just trying to say it's more of Aaron's area, but first of all, I don't see the gated-in thing as a way to keep kids or anybody from walking to school or getting out of the community. I see the gates as to protect people from the problems that are around them, based on my experience as a police officer in this city for 15 years. Furthermore, I don't know why we could say this does not, it's not consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. We have one north and one south, and those are both gated communities, again, to protect the residents of the community, not to keep the kids from walking to school. But is this not consistent with one north and one south to have large fences, walls, and gates around their community? So, that's my two cents worth, having a dog in this race as a general resident of Urbana.
Jared, did you want to say?
Yeah, so I have one question with regards to Carl, Diane, I guess for you, maybe anyone else on City who might have an inkling for it, but with such a large lot, are we not possibly losing the opportunity of Carl using that to build something in Urbana instead of building something in Champaign, the way that it's been going for...
Well, if Carl bought that land, it would be non-taxable. So, this is, I see, this was seen as a way to, as was mentioned, perhaps, provide housing for people working at Carl, but it would be on the tax rules as opposed to an institutional use that would be tax exempt.
Got you.
And as far as the medical college, well, we saw the U of I master plan, if anything's going to happen on the north end of campus, it'll happen south of University Avenue for the university to build, related to the medical college.
Sure, I just, I mean, I understand that it could possibly be an opportunity for folks to live there who work at Carl. I happen to know a lot of people who work at Carl, and I know how much student housing costs, and I know a lot of them couldn't afford to live in what our students pay for housing, so I don't know that, you know, the nuts and bolts workers of the hospital would be able to work there, and the people who could afford to work there probably wouldn't choose to live there. So, I don't, I mean, this is, it's very for students. I mean, there's no if, ands, or ways about it. That's how they're going to market it, that's how the retreat is. I've looked at the retreat in other communities, and that's what the retreat is. It's a, you know, what is the, what's the other one that we have down in Savoy? I always see the buses for, you know what I'm talking about. Does anybody know what, it's a giant apartment complex. Anyway, it's, the name also like the retreat, it's something like that.
Sterling? You're talking about the Sterling one on South First?
Uh, no, it's not Sterling, it's Besides the Point. It's called The Point. That's what it is. It's called The Point. They have their buses that all run around, and they're like, come live at The Point. Anyway, this is, that's how that's going to be, this is how it's going to be marketed. I mean, I just can't, I can't see Carl employees actually being able to afford to live in a place like this. But that's just me, in my experience with folks there. But if you don't think that there's any chance that we're ever going to get that, I mean, it's just a big lot, and that's all.
Well, the property was decommissioned, and it went under contract almost immediately, so we don't have any control over who purchases this lot, and this is going to be private ownership, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Dean?
Do you allow our rules?
Yes.
I'd have to respectfully, to a certain extent, disagree with my lovely colleague here. I said lovely.
Oh, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, it's your hair.
The odd couple.
There are a lot of young 20-year-olds working at Carl that have very good incomes, that have not settled down yet, that maybe aren't committed to staying here for more than a couple of years, traveling nurses, traveling doctors, young professionals. He may be right that it may be the majority of students, but I think there will be a good load of people from Carl that just don't want to buy a house yet that would live there. And I know that's not the crowd Aaron wanted to speak to, but I don't think it would be all students. I think you'd have a lot of Carl people, too, and Provena Presence, OSF, or whatever they are now.
Any other issues related to zoning or the comp plan? Aaron, and then Dennis?
So, I'm often trying to make sure that I understand the process, but individuals who I represent, who are watching, are trying to understand this as well. So, on one hand, we're told that this is a zoning issue, and we should stick to the zoning question and whether or not they meet the LaSalle criteria, but we're actually looking at a conceptual site plan. So, there is a proposal or an idea of what's going to take place at this location, so, in which I'm excited about a new development taking place in our ward. I think it's a good thing to have that type of activity. I just want an opportunity for the individuals who live in the area to be able to afford to live there, right? That is a big, big deal for us, right? And I don't necessarily agree with the breakdown of apartments for, if you're talking about a family, a family doesn't want to live in a four-bedroom space where they have to rent each room, right? That's not for a family, that's not for a couple to come and live there, that's not what they're going to do there. That's going to be for students, right? So, and I'm not lost, none of us who have been around here for a while, we're not lost on what's happening on University Avenue, it's turning into Green Street. So, we know what that is, and so, if there's not going to be an attempt to address actually the facade or the culture and environment of the community, just even thinking about putting a gated community there is outside of the scope of what I would like to see and I think the residents that I represent. I don't like the fence around the other ones, Dean. I think they block, when you go down Goodwin Avenue, and you, I'm going that way, walking or talking to residents, there's this big fence that I can't access this huge apartment complex because it's, again, it's something for students. What we see in the community is that the whole bike trails, the multipurpose trails, they're just there for the students to reach campus, they're not there for the community. That is what, that's the way we feel about that. So, I don't want to see another situation that, another piece of land that's being, or development that's being brought in that is not first and foremost taken into consideration the people who live in the area now. All of this conversation has, very subtly and very, I think, revealing, led to conversations about who we're going to really be marketed to. So, I want something in the area. I know this area has to be developed, but I do think Mr. First has a good point, I believe, and maybe there's some other conversation that could take place to address the development that makes it fit better. But from a zoning standpoint, without putting restrictions on whether or not it qualifies, I feel like I'm in a rock and a hard place in a way that Dennis said, because if I vote for it, then I have to undo something that's been done in order to address the concerns that I might have. So, I need some legal advice, I think.
I'm not sure what your legal question is.
Well, maybe it's a procedural question, Lori. So, if we vote to turn this into R4, and then we get into the development stage, is there a way to say that we can put restrictions on it then? We can put on what the developer is able to do? We have to, could we then go back to Mr. First's idea of making this R4, and then the rest of it, R2 and R3? Would that be within our purview?
Well, if they come in with plans that meet all of the city's various codes, meaning building code, zoning code, subdivision code, then no, there's not an ability to make them do anything other than what we already have on the books in terms of codes.
I would address, I'd like to address a couple of your concerns. I did attend the neighborhood meeting and spent probably a couple hours there, basically looking at the plans, but also listening to the residents who were there and listening to the answers that the owners were giving them. And there was a great deal of discussion about how this would integrate into the neighborhood, and it was pointed out that the houses are, and I think the developers have made a real effort to this date, and this is all still conceptual, to have outward-facing buildings, there are scale that fit into the neighborhood, especially facing Hill Street. They pointed out the porches, these have front porches and sidewalks and porch swings, and they face onto Church Street, they face onto Lincoln Avenue, and then the ones, you know, on the south end, of course, are going to face inward. But there was a lot of thought put into front yards, front porches, front-facing, outward-facing buildings that are of a scale that are much smaller than what you see anywhere else along University Avenue, and that, and frankly, the neighbors who were at this meeting were very, very positive about the appearance of the buildings, the colors, what the houses look like, and the appearance. So, there weren't any, there were some questions, but they were all, I think, addressed by, straight on by the owners. And this is a location that is, whether, you know, it's a location on University Avenue, literally across the street from the University of Illinois, and in between the university and Carl Hospital, and close to where a proposed medical college and activity may occur and other development in that regard. And as far as the cost of this, it is, you know, it will be market rate, but the city of Urbana is also committed to affordable housing, and we've just finished Highland Greed, we're about to completely renovate hundreds of units at Aspen Court, and T W G, which is another very reputable company, is doing that. We have the site where the former Urbana Town Homes was, that will be a mixed, that will be affordable housing as well, and we have Crystal View Town Homes and a number of other sites. So, this, and this neighborhood itself has a mixture of small homes and rental properties of varying price points as well. So, as far as what I heard the developers propose and discuss with the neighbors who attended this meeting, I was assured, I was reassured by what I was hearing.
Okay, so...
One more time, and then we should...
Well, the thing that is the sticking point for me, to be very clear, is that there's no question that the objective here is to make this an appeal to professionals and for students in particular. I don't think of, I don't think of families renting homes and renting each bedroom, okay? This is a residential area where families are living currently. If the objective is to make sure that, for instance, Hill Street was the spot there, we're going to make sure that we had, the individuals who were displaced are going to have access to an actual home in that area, right? Something that addresses the concern that's being raised is what I'm looking for, right? Now, the idea or the notion that we are pushing for affordable housing, and this is just in response to the mayor's comments, I don't think it's lost on any of us who live here exactly what the concerns are in the Aspen Court area, what the old Crystal View and stuff was, the lakeside area. You know, we're talking about a low-income area versus a mixed-income residential area where families want to stay close to University Avenue and have the same access that you say all these people who would live here would have as well. So, a development of this sort that does not take into consideration the actual people who are living in the area and have them as a central point, a component of the development is problematic for me. So, if it doesn't fit that particular aspect that we, that Councilmember Miller helped me understand about the LaSalle criteria, I will stand again on those particular issues until I get information that makes me feel comfortable that the people that I represent are going to be happy with this overall. And I guess the last point, Madam Mayor, I appreciate your attendance at the, whether it's the UCAP meetings or at this particular meeting, but I don't think it's fair to say that if a handful of individuals who show up at a meeting are going to represent the feelings of the entire area there. So, I appreciate some of the aesthetics, a front porch and all that type of stuff would be great if Mr. Jackson and Mr. Smith and Mr. Hill, whoever lived in those areas, were going to be on those front ports, but I don't think the area that's facing Hill Street and knowing that area and walking that area on a regular basis, that's not the same as what the other houses that are there currently, so...
Okay, Dennis?
All right, so, all right, so I'm very favorable about this thing, but I guess maybe I appreciate Aaron's questions about it. We don't have a way of kind of, if I could imagine that the 11 properties, well, the properties facing Hill Street and Church Street were going to be limited perhaps to duplex construction, and, you know, that there would be more buildings facing toward the existing community that felt in scale to actually fit into that community, if they were also going to be available to a family, we're not talking about like the R4-style high-rise along the railroad track, which, if you're going to be leasing individual bedrooms, I don't care about that so much, but the ones that are actually integrated on the north end of the project proposal on Hill Street and facing into the community itself were, could be guaranteed to be adaptable and smaller scale, I would support this a lot. And I'm wondering if it would be useful to this council to defer this decision until next council meeting, to allow you to have a conversation with the corporate leaders of Landmark Properties to discuss this issue, because what we have here is merely a proposed layout. Maybe it would require some of the buildings on Hill Street to be downsized, but would Landmark Properties... But would landmark properties be willing to have that conversation in the next week and a half and come back to us for a final vote? I guess that's what I'm proposing, that we perhaps defer this discussion to our next council meeting.
Dean.
I want to remind everybody, tell me if I'm wrong, but it's our job to follow the LaSalle criteria. It is not our job to talk about feelings or anything else. It's our job to follow the case law on this. And I know the case law and its beg, but I think this is where we often get off track as we start talking about how we feel and things like that. So, I just wanted to remind the council of that. One other thing is, I've heard a lot of talk since I've been here in my short seven or eight months about a lack of willingness for people wanting to invest north of University Avenue. This seems like a rare opportunity to miss for somebody sinking a significant amount of money into a property north of University Avenue, a property that's going to what, do what otherwise? It's a big, empty lot, growing grass. So, that's my quick two cents worth, thank you.
One more round. Jared.
Just a procedural question.
Yes.
Voting on this, is this basically like our committee, the whole vote and our council vote in the same vote?
This is a city council vote, yes.
We're only going to vote on it once if we vote on it tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
No, I'm not going to make that motion, but I just want to make it clear to the other council members that without getting some feedback on the issues that we've raised tonight from these developers, I will not support this.
Mary Alice.
I apologize, Dean, but I'm a bit torn here. And here's why I am torn. On the one hand, I want this community to be able to provide affordable housing. I want families to be able to afford to live in any types of properties that we get behind. At the same time, I feel like we cannot discriminate against students. Students are people too, and students have a right to good housing, to housing that is different, that is not, you know, 10-story high-rises. And so, I am torn because on the one hand, I want to have the families to be able to live in these apartments. I think that the structure of the rent certainly does not lend itself towards families renting something by bedroom. It's not traditionally what is done in our community. But at the same time, I feel like I can't base my decision on that specifically purely because it would be discrimination against students. So, I just wanted to say that.
Eric.
So, I think there's no question that the proposal will improve the property that is being considered. We're moving from an abandoned industrial property to a townhouse complex. I think the city is committed to affordable housing, but we can't lay the burden of, that is a burden that's citywide. We can't lay the affordable housing burden explicitly on every single development that we consider or that is proposed. So, I think that this does meet the LaSalle criteria as I understand them. So, I anticipate, or I would favor this. On the other hand, if we don't have the votes to pass it, well, I, no, I'll, I'm just going to say I will favor this. If we don't have the votes to pass it in its current form, then let's try to work out some modification, but I'm prepared to vote in favor of it as it stands.
I'd like to motion that we go ahead and take a vote on this.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion?
Yes. I would prefer that we take the route that Dennis is proposing so that we can have a conversation. Frankly, I think it would be great that whenever there's a proposed development in any of the wards that we all sit here and represent, that there would be some sort of conversation with the individual representing that ward. So, some of these questions could be worked out in a more relaxed atmosphere or environment. Some of these questions could be raised as opposed to coming to a point in a public venue as we sit down. So, I would prepare, I would prefer that we just, let's give staff and others, individuals opportunities to speak to some of the things that have been raised here, and let's revisit it. But if we're forced to vote on it, then let's vote on it.
We have a motion on the floor. Is this a roll call vote? Does the clerk, does the mayor break a tie? Go ahead.
City Councilmember Sammons.
No.
Hazen?
Hundred percent yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Well, based on the zoning and the LaSalle requirements concerning zoning, I guess I'll vote yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2018-03018, an ordinance amending Urbana zoning map. Rezoning 601, 701, 703, 705, 707, North Lincoln, 906, 908, 910, West Church Street. And 903, 905, 907, 909, West Hill Street, from R2, B2, IN1 to R4. Are there any further comments, Lori, or?
I assume I just, I presented both of those together, so I assume.
Is there a motion?
I will move passage of the rezoning.
I'll second it.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Further discussion? Dennis.
Yeah, all right. So, I would really appreciate the conversation or consideration of the concerns of this community that you've heard tonight. You have the freedom to reimage certain sections of your proposal, which I realize is schematic, but you would gain appreciation and approval to take these thoughts seriously as you go forward, because you will be bringing to, well, I don't know, I guess we're never going to see the final plat that you propose as far as the layout. But the community has real concerns, they're not onerous concerns to incorporate into your proposal. And I, I think that it's important to bring this property into the public, to make it into a community that property taxes can be, can help support the city's infrastructure and services. And yes, it is an issue about the balance between affordability and, I think, what could be a very handsome development. I don't think that this particular project has to bear the full responsibility for affordable housing, but it wouldn't hurt to consider how you could ingratiate yourself to this community by considering preserving some part of the, of the structure of these buildings to be really, truly family-oriented rather than apartment-student oriented. And that would, I think, satisfy all my concerns.
Eric.
I'll, I'll support what Dennis is saying. Sometimes we, we can't exactly, you know, because of the constraints of how the law is structured and, you know, the zoning ordinances and what we're supposed to consider, we, our conversation with you is constrained within those boundaries. But, but I, I totally support what Dennis is saying. And who knows? You might want to come back and do business with us again.
That's right.
I have a question.
Erin?
So, I don't know if it would be Brandon or Lori, but when there's a proposed redevelopment of any particular parcel, and we have to rezone it, is it necessary to offer a conceptual site plan or anything like that?
No, it is not required. Oftentimes, folks ask for it, whether it's at Plan Commission or City Council. So, you might notice that it was not included in the staff reports, so the applicant did provide that, thinking that it might be helpful. But we as staff only needed to understand what it was they were looking to do to ensure that the zoning that they were proposing and the comprehensive plan amendment that they were proposing would fit with their vision for that area. So, we needed to see it in order to help evaluate if that's the right, you know, the right proposals, but it is not required. And as I said, it cannot be a condition of the rezoning to say it needs to look like this or that.
So, you're saying that there is a, there is a certain amount of information that is required, that they would be, that any developer would be held accountable for and must stick to in order for us to change the rezoning? Or is it just simply a proposal?
Well, I suppose if somebody wanted to request a rezoning but not give us any information because they've done the analysis and they think it's fine, they're certainly entitled to do that. But typically, a developer appreciates that staff is willing to double-check their math, so to speak, to make sure that they're proposing the right zone, for instance. So, they don't, it's not required, but it's usually helpful for them to submit some information to staff so that we can analyze whether or not it fits with the rules and regs.
So, the conceptual site plan could just change dramatically, as long as it stayed within what required, what was, what's required for, what we've rezoned it for. This could change completely, and there's nothing that we could say about it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, whereas the zoning is the law of the land, the comprehensive plan is a guide, and the comprehensive plan amendment that was the subject of the previous ordinance did call for mixed residential, and it describes that it should transition from higher density to lower density to better, to be better compatible with the neighborhood. And there's a few other things in there about the density of the buildings that really fits this design. So, whereas the zoning is the law of the land, the comprehensive plan does guide it. So, I think that the developer is hearing everything that they're hearing tonight and probably taking that to heart. But this is much more detailed than we typically get for a rezoning. So, that says to me that they have already invested a lot into the redevelopment of the site by preparing this level of detail. So, I can't speak for them, but I'm fairly certain that this is the, this is the kind of design that they're anticipating constructing, understanding, of course, it is schematic, and they have to figure out all the engineering.
So, one of the reasons why I raised the question, and I want to speak specifically to the developers and also to those who are listening, is that many times, questions could be perceived as trying to argue as a first, as opposed to trying to be educated about how the process works. So, I appreciate any developer who's going to go above and beyond what they're required to do, to give us something to conceptualize and to have an idea of what it would look like. I appreciate that. I have to do my due diligence as a representative to make sure that the concerns are being brought forward. I don't think if I were to survey the folks in Ward 3, that they would say, hey, we don't want this, period. But I do believe they would want, I mean, it's a site that's not developed at this particular point. So, certainly, we want something nice in the area. We just want to make sure that the concerns that we have are taken into consideration. And so, I was just trying to understand systemically, so to speak, how the process works and at what point residents or other folks could be involved in making, and help shape that. So, I appreciate the efforts and the time and the willingness to come and do business in the city of Urbana. And again, of course, echoing some of my colleagues, making sure that the idea of affordable housing is taken into consideration and the, the culture of the neighborhood, of the people who live there in that area. And I do not think that you all bear the burden of bringing affordable housing to the city of Urbana, but I think any development, whether it was what you're proposing or the development across the street that we've talked about, I still think affordable housing should be considered in any development that we do, so, to some degree, right? So, but again, thank you for your interest.
And I will say, from what I've known or heard about this developer from staff, they've actually worked a great deal responding to some of the questions and concerns, especially with talking about connectivity through the site, across the site to Lincoln and University for the residents there and farther north. So, I appreciate the amount of time that this company has spent actually getting to this point. So, we have a.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make one last comment?
Yes, and then we'll.
I'll be quick. I just wanted to say to the developers, I hope that you hire locally. This looks like one heck of a project. I think it would be great if you could think of some type of a way to reach out to this neighborhood right here that you're in. There's a lot of, a lot of skilled workers there that would probably be thrilled to come there and work, especially being so close to home. So, I hope you reach out to them and keep it as local as possible. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
No.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is ordinance number 2018-03019, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map for rezoning multiple downtown properties to be for Central Business District. Lori Pearson, Planning Manager.
Give me just a minute to pull up the right presentation. All right. Periodically, we review our zoning map and compare it to our comprehensive plan to kind of see if things are aligned, or if there's a need to perhaps do some rezonings of properties. So, in particular, we were focused on the downtown area on this one, and we identified a number of properties that have zoning that is inconsistent with their future land use designation. So, we just wanted to go ahead and clean that up. And a couple of these have a couple extra benefits that I'll talk about, too. So, I think you have this page in your packet, so it's, might be a little bit small on the screen. But in essence, we're talking about two different areas, four parcels, but two different areas. So, let's first go to the area of the library. So, here, there are three parcels along Green Street, right at the corner of Race, recently purchased by the foundation, the Library Foundation. This middle parcel, yes, a random parcel here, that's mostly parking lot and entrance for the library. And then the one on the corner of Cedar, and of course, my mouse isn't working, which is the home of the Bluebird Boutique. So, we are suggesting that each of these get rezoned from their current zonings. We've got a couple residential R6s here, and then a B1 zoning on these. We're suggesting that they get rezoned to, excuse me, B4, which is the consistent zoning for our downtown. Oh, now, I'm in the wrong thing, sorry. So, basically, what that means is that these three parcels would turn purple and be like their neighbors. And so, that means that the library would all have the same zoning. And what that means for the Bluebird Boutique is, they would like to do a small expansion project. And just so you know, they are a tenant. The city owns that property, but they are a tenant that is, would like to, on their own dime, do a small expansion in the back. So, to do that, rather than get variances, this is one way to fix that issue and make the zoning consistent, so it kills two bluebirds with one stone. I'm sorry, I had to. So, the second one, let's go a little bit farther north and to the east, between Broadway and Vine. Some of you might know this, this building that's in this industrial area. It's known as the Gill Building. For a long time, it served as storage, but it has a new owner. And that new owner would like to do more active uses there, more downtown-like uses there. So, you can see that it is, its current zoning, gray, this is IN1, it has industrial zoning within our downtown. So, that doesn't usually make much sense. He wants to do, as I said, uses that are more downtown-like, so, and it does have a future land use designation that envisions Central Business. So, this rezoning would turn that also purple to be the B4 zoning, to make it consistent with its neighbors and to allow the type. with its neighbors and to allow the types of uses that this new owner would love to put in this building. So this also went to Plan Commission on their February 22 meeting. With very little discussion, it was decided that the Plan Commission found that the LaSalle criteria met for this one as well, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval to City Council. Staff would also recommend the same.
Questions for staff? Mary Alice?
So the property that we're talking about rezoning from industrial, is that where Blockbuster used to be?
No, it's south. So if you go up Broadway and you stop at the medical supply store and you look to the east, there's this large industrial-looking building.
It's directly across from Broadway Food Hall.
Oh.
So it's set back quite a ways from Broadway, so you might not be able to picture it. It's also...
What's throwing me off here is it looks like there's a street.
Yeah.
That's what's throwing me off.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no, thanks.
Is there a motion? Oh, Dennis? Do you have a motion?
Do we... A question. Do, can it be revealed who the owner of the property is that we're looking at?
Mike Hosier.
Oh.
The one of the industrially-zoned one, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, then, that we accept the... It's a amendment to the zoning map, rezoning multiple parcels downtown in the Central Business District.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sammons?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is adopting the City Council Mayor priorities that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, and you have the draft in your packet. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion, yes.
By Erin, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? Dean?
So I think it is important that we don't leave out the South Philo Road District in the list of priorities. I was not at that meeting, obviously. I was ill and couldn't make it. I went back and watched what I could, although I'm working a new job, so it was hard for me to watch the whole thing. But I think it kind of got wrapped in with the Lincoln Square Mall thing, and then it kind of got just dropped off, and I don't think anybody intended it to. So my suggestion is that we amend this to have six priorities. I think most of us agree that South Philo Road in general has a lot of priority, or a lot of potential to develop and be good, and has a lot of potential to go downhill real easily, too. So I would ask for your support in amending this to a sixth priority and making that, make the list. Thank you.
Do you have suggested language for that?
Language for that?
Fourth, number six?
Oh, Charlie's got it. Yeah, I don't remember. I've slept since then.
So it was make Southeast Urbana an economic priority, the Philo Road Business District?
Yes, you're correct.
Would you want to add that to this list?
Yes. That's what I'm asking.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
I'd support adding it. I mean, I made a large case for it in the first place. You know, I think that we all understand that it would be a priority even if it wasn't on the list, but I don't think it's going to be detrimental for us to add it on there. So it'll have my support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have number six.
And I would like to make a... Can I be recognized?
Yes, you may be recognized.
All right. And also, we have a priority number four, which is expanding the Kickapoo Rail Trail with a focus between Vine Street and Lincoln Avenue. And I would like to propose just adding, just so that we can move forward on it, because we are very likely to move forward more quickly and to probably even achieve some real advances in the near future, the words at the end of that, "and the Boneyard Creek Multi-Use Path." I think it's kind of, seems to be specifically left off, that all the attention would be just beyond the Kickapoo Rail Trail. And I think that the other larger plan that we, as a larger plan as we have going forward is development of the Boneyard Creek Multi-Use Path between the downtown and the campus. So I'd like to add, "and the Boneyard Creek Multi-Use Path."
I would second that if that's a motion.
That's a motion for myself.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of this addition, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Erin?
So for priority number three, work toward equity in traffic stops and reduce the disparate impact of court costs and fines on lower-income people. As a priority, I don't think the terminology of work toward equity is strong enough language.
Achieve?
Achieve or guarantee, something like that, equity in traffic stops and the rest of the language. So that is my proposal.
Achieve is the word?
I like guarantee better.
To me, guarantee almost sounds like you're purchasing something. Turn it in. I don't know if that's the right word.
I understand.
I like achieve. I mean, achieve is a goal, right? We want to achieve something.
I can live with that.
All those in... Okay. You're moving, okay. You're proposing achieve, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oops, I don't vote. All those opposed? Okay. Are we ready to adopt? Did we have a motion?
I'll move that...
Okay, go ahead.
I'll move that we accept.
No, it was, we, no. It was the original motion by Sammons and Dean Hazen.
Yeah.
You're right.
Oh, I guess I didn't write that down.
Okay.
So the main motion, and it was made by Erin and Dean?
Yep.
Back on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. We will add...
Mayor?
Are we adjourned? Yes, this meeting is adjourned.